Start the meeting. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge of allegiance is to the Father and the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing, please. Ellis, Queens going to pray first, and have a moment of silence for Vivian.
If we could, before we pray, let's have a moment of silent prayer for the family of Vivian Primal who passed away. Father God, we come before you this evening thanking for all that you do for us. And thank you for all the many blessings that you have given us. And we realize, Father, that you are a Lord of God, and that you have power over all. We ask that you bless our community, and bless our leaders. Help them to make the good decisions about our county, to make our county a better place to live for all of us. We just ask that you be with our leaders and bless them with the leadership they need, and give them the ability for discernment. Give them guidance, give them patience and understanding, help direct them in their duties of the county. Be with us all, Lord, until the day of your return. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Ellis. I appreciate it. Does everyone have an opportunity to go over the minutes of the previous meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Have a second.
Second.
All those who have the papers sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do we have any mail we need to address at this time? Okay. Does our attorney have anything to add?
I do not have anything at this time.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
Okay, fine. Any committee reports? Meeting's there, okay. Do we have a commissioner's representative here tonight?
Yep.
Would you like to come and tell us what you decide upon?
I will if you want me to.
Well, I want you to.
Okay. I always say the same thing. I'll be free.
Well, and didn't spend any money, right?
We try. Today's meeting really wasn't all right eventful. But we did manage to get one thing behind us today. We officially approved a contract agreement between the county and Everclear Aquatic Management LLC from Kendallville to do the sediment removal plan at Manlove Lake. So they will be beginning relatively soon. And the, I've got a copy of the contract here. I'll be glad to share it with anybody that wants to see it. Get this plan done this year, and then next year we'll reapply for a larger grant from the DNR to actually start work. The cost of this project to do the, um, the plan is $9,375. Seventy-five hundred dollars of that is covered by a grant from the DNR. And in-kind services that were allowed for the other 10%, or for 20% of that, comes to $937.50 for in-kind contributions and the county's contribution. So we will have to pay $937.50 to get this set down. To me, that's a bargain. And hopefully, things will go well with this, and next year we'll move on. As grants go, this has been one of the simplest, easiest, quickest ones to move along that I've ever seen. So they're pretty easy to work with. We call this the LARE grant. LARE is an acronym for Lake and River Enhancement.
So you want that, a motion made on that tonight?
No, we've already taken care of it. Commissioners approved this contract today, but I'm just letting you know that we've...
We're gonna have $937 taken for that, okay?
Yeah. So when you say, "Don't spend any money," I get you, but we're gonna spend a little...
When you've got a budget, you can spend some, okay?
Yeah, okay. Also, um, we, we did, we terminated... You all know that I've been trying to get the trim and all painted over the old annex building for a long, long time. Get that thing cleaned up and looking nice. Well, we had an existing contract with a local painting contractor that is now 218 days past maturity. So we terminated that contract today with that contractor, and we're gonna try to go another route, find somebody else to do that work. Our guys have got the front of the jail looking real nice, and then the old building next to it is looking kinda shabby. It looks even worse now that the front of the jail looks nice. So we're working on that. We also had a discussion today with Matt Shirk about the 2024 funding options for the county health department. And as you've all heard about the local public health funding that the legislature has passed this summer, a lot of people have a lot of questions about this, what it's gonna do to our local health department, and whether or not it takes authority away from the local unit, that sort of thing. We have, uh, we have a resolution in front of us to opt in to this. Commissioners are not acting on this until we have an informational, joint informational session between the commissioners, you, the council, and the county health board and their officials. And we would like to schedule that before the end of this month if possible. So I'll either send out an email, or contact you individually or something. So if you can, please make room on your calendars sometime this month for a meeting like that, because we want everyone to hear all the same information at the same time in the same room, so that there's no confusion about what opting in versus opting out means.
Uh, Dale, when's your next commissioners' meeting?
Our next commissioners' meeting will be June 16th, is it Jane?
Twenty.
June 20th.
Would it not be a good time to schedule that while you're already here?
We don't have all the players in the room yet.
Okay.
But I'm saying, this is something we need to do. I, we're gonna depend on Matt Shirk to handle at least the health department people. And, you know, myself, between myself and the other commissioners, surely between us, we can agree on something. But we, and you know what? There's still information that's being forwarded. There's still guidance reels that are still coming. So we're hoping late, late in the month, more useful information will be available.
Well, if the 20th year, usually you meet at two, usually about maybe three or four o'clock, you might be, it'd be something to think about if it worked out.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to recommend doing it on, on the 20th. I wouldn't wait probably a little bit later than that.
But July 1st is too late.
Well, just try to get it done by the end of the month if we can.
Okay.
But, you know, keep that in mind, and stay tuned, and I'll stay in contact on that. So, and we're, we're gonna really try to answer everybody's concerns and questions about that. And there's a lot of questions that we don't have answers for yet, because the guidance is a little bit slow about getting to us from Indianapolis. It's one thing for the legislature to pass a piece of legislation, then the administrators have to decide, well, how are we going to actually do what the legislature says? So we'll, we'll get it eventually.
Okay.
Okay? That's all I need to talk about.
Thank you, Dale. Appreciate your work.
I have an update with a TIF after the city meeting that you can share.
That's a long-going...
I was there at that meeting. I didn't hear anything that hadn't been said before.
Well, I just wondered if you could share anything so the public would hear.
Well, that's the thing you can argue for or against, either, either way, okay? What our concern is and how it affects our finances.
Correct.
And there's gonna be plenty of opportunity later on in the year, I think, to have that discussion again.
Clearly, the city is interested in doing a tax income financing district, but to this point, they haven't, I haven't heard of any indication about the scope of what that TIF might look like. So until we know what their intentions are, we're just kinda waiting on them.
Right. And we're all better prepared than we were before, so...
That's right.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Dale. Dan Parker's gonna give us a report.
Thank you, Robert. Good evening, County Council. Just a short, little blurb here from me. I think all of you received an invitation via email about this ready 2.0 meeting that is gonna take place on June 13th from 9:00 to 10:30 at the Ivy Tech Building in the East Central Event Room. The fiscal agent, which is East Central Indiana Regional Partnership, their leadership will be there, kinda running the meeting, and also a representative from HWC Engineering, which will be the grant writer. And that's a little switch, we use a different firm, the Ready 1.0. So this company, I believe, is the company that did Rushvilles, and they were in a different region. They were in the I-74 corridor, if I'm not mistaken. I believe that was the region they were in. But they got a pretty good, pretty good, uh, amount of money for, I believe, a two-county region. So they're gonna be our grant writer in this go-round. And so I hope all of you can alter your schedules to attend. I know it's not a lot of notice. We got the notification Friday, and we sent out the invitations yesterday. So apologize for not that long of a notice, and we would certainly like it if each of you could come to that.
Is that June 16th, you said?
Thirteenth.
June 13th.
That's a Tuesday, June 13th, from 9:00 in the morning till 10:30 in the morning. The I can take those. Okay. And the other thing that I wanted to, I shared in the commissioners' meeting, we've got a notification from our grant writer, Klein Peter and Associates, that the funding is full and is going to be paid out, I think, this month before the third phase of the COVID extension to 26 Fayette County businesses. So we're, we're happy about that. That'll be the money coming their way to inject into the economy here in Fayette County. And that's all I have, unless, if you have any questions for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Is there any old business this time to be discussed? New business? Jane, you wanna fill us in on that?
Just the, the dates for the budgets. I have to do a pre-budget survey in Gateway, and so I just went with what we've done the last few years. Budget hearings would start on August 8th at 9:00, and then the budget adoption date would be September 19th.
That's a two-day, 8th and 9th.
She only has the 8th here. We're gonna...
We, we would do two days, but I, I only have to advertise the first date because you don't adjourn. You just...
Just continue on.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's really nice. Jane supplies donuts, coffee for everybody, so you wanna make sure you make it.
Uh, that's a no.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Change of plans. Okay, all right. The beer. Okay. Okay. Any other new business? Okay. Transfers, additional reduction. Transfer requests for Fayette County Drug Coalition. That's just moving money over, right? Now you're moving money over to best amount, $1,200?
Yes.
Equipment purchase of a laptop and printer for use for the drug collection is not currently assigned equipment to this position, so this is already budgeted, so... Do I have a motion to approve the moving up towards $1,200?
Still move.
Second.
Okay. All those who have the papers sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Transfer requests for cumulative capital development funds from account 30303 to account 20290, other supplies, $500. And the commissioners?
Make a motion to approve the $500 transfer.
Second.
Approve it second. All those who have the papers sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have an additional appropriation for a bridge fund, account 30303, other services for $8,000. Do we have another transferred bond? Oh, the other transfer? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to get you out early, okay? Okay. Transfer requests from account 40060, bill of interest, uh, destruction account 20271, IT supplies. Okay. Missed that one, Jane. Sorry about that. Okay. Total amount, what, 2736? Eleven, okay. Eleven, okay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the transfer for 2736.11 for the transfer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the transfer, 273611, over, over, pay with signature saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we got that. Okay. All right, now moving on. Additional appropriation for a covered bridge fund, 1134, account 30303, other services, $8,141.38.
We don't have anybody from the city here tonight, um, do we know anything about this?
Oh, that's the bridge money we approved for the park, the bridge, Canadian Bridge?
Paid for repairs.
They never picked it up.
Long way to bridge.
We approved it a long time ago. They never picked the money up.
That is true. You all, you all approved this last year, and then they had kinda had some change in leadership at the Park Department, and it sort of dropped. So they're just, it's the balance of the fund. We used to get so much money from the state every year, but we had to send in a form certifying that we had a covered bridge, but it had to be on a road. So once the bridge was no longer on a road, we couldn't collect that money, but that's the remaining balance of the fund.
Was it legal to do it this way, up to Park?
I believe it would be legal to spend it to, what did you think, Dale? It'd be legal to spend that to, on the covered bridge at the park? I don't know what else we would, we could spend it on. I mean, it has to be spent on a covered bridge.
That was what it was sent here for.
Yeah.
Has the Park Department requested it?
Yes. Yeah, that's what they're talking about, the additional, right now. They requested it.
We approved it last year, but whenever, nobody ever followed up and come and got it.
So it's not really an additional appropriation, it's more or less a transfer. This hasn't been transferred yet?
Kinda. Well, yeah, well, we didn't budget that fund, so it's an additional appropriation to be able to spend it.
You need a motion. So we've got the balance. I'll make it both. I'll make it both.
Yeah.
Okay.
The second.
Okay. The second to accept this transfer of funds. All those who have the papers sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we got that now. Additional appropriation to County General Fund from Superior Court, account 30440, minimum health evaluations, $20,000.
Psyche fees, you say, or psych evals up? Sure.
Greetings.
Greetings.
Shot through my entire budget for psych evals in the first quarter. For a wrap.
Judge, how much does it cost per person for evaluation?
The law is, two out of three psychiatrists have to agree to commit the person. So what I do to save money is I appoint two. And if they agree, there's no need to hire a third.
Right.
Almost always, the two do agree, but every once in a while, they won't, and then I have to appoint a third one as a tiebreaker. And those docs usually charge somewhere between $900 and $1,400 a whack. So you're looking at, you know, do the math there, two grand to $2,700 per person that has to be evaluated. And, you know, I have to do it.
I don't.
By rule, but, but I do wanna say this, just to be on the record. That system's broken, and it's the state's fault. What happens is, they almost always find them not fit to stand trial, and then I send them off to the state hospital, and they keep them for about 30 days, sometimes 90 days. They pump them full of all kinds of intravenous psychiatric drugs, and they level them off. You could turn an enraged gorilla into a sane person, you put enough dope in him. Then they call, and they say, "He's good. Come get him." And we bring him back, and, you know, the state hopes to get a plea through while he's momentarily, or she, momentarily sane enough to talk to, the attorneys have to be able to deal with him. Sometimes we do, and sometimes we don't. Sometimes people foolishly then get him back, and they say, "Oh, they're good now." Their grandma or somebody like that that loves them, you know, they'll come bond them out. And then they bond them out, and they don't take their medicine. They get arrested again before we've even got around to it, and that's the heck of it. Then if they get arrested again, you know, that's a different case, so I have to do it again. And this is, uh, it's usually a lot cheaper the second time, if it's very close in time, the docs try to treat us right on that. Because I get to pick who I appoint, so they know not to get too, not to get too salty with the bills. There's no real shortage of these guys to find, and I can get them. So they review what they already did a month or two ago, or three, four months ago, and then just amend it, and those are usually a lot cheaper bills. Sometimes they get evaluated twice before we can get them. They don't keep them. In the old days, and by the old days, I'm just talking about 20 years ago, I'm not, I've not been doing this that long. I'm starting to get some age on me. I'll be 52 tomorrow. Uh, but you would do these, and it had some effect, because we'd send them up to the state hospital, and they'd just keep them. They'd just keep them. The era of, you know, permanently or semi-permanently institutionalizing people who have lifelong illness, this is just over, because it costs a lot at the state level, and they just don't do it. So they just keep sending the problem, cycling it around, back to us, into the jail, into my court, off for a month to the state hospital, send them back to us, spend some more money on them, plead them out, maybe they go to the state pen for a minute. They get out of that, they come right back here to roost. They're not fixed, get arrested again, totally off their meds. Process starts over and over again. This is just Titanic waste of money.
And, yeah, I, and you're talking about, you, you order some of this, but a lot of this happens before you ever get to them. When they first enter into jail. Are they psychanalyzing all when they get in there? I mean...
No, I mean, they, they'll tell me at the time of their arraignment or initial hearing.
The time you get them, it's only a minute, add two or three weeks, or a longer, the problems.
Well, I see them within 72 hours from the time they're arrested, if they don't bond out, by, by law. They have to get in front of me for an initial hearing.
Once the attorney puts it off in those six months.
Well, I had a guy the other day who remained nameless, and Wes Green, the jail officer, calls me and says, "Judge, this guy, he's in desperate need of his, his constitutional clock's running. We gotta get him in front of you for an initial hearing." And, uh, he's still not right. So, "Well, we'll give it a shot. We'll see if he can make it through the colloquy of what I have to tell him and what he has to say in a way of understanding." I don't want him over here, though. If it's gonna be a fight, I don't have any security. Let's just do it on the video. So, okay, I'm sitting in front of the screen, I hit the button. Soon as his face comes up on my screen, he sees my face on his screen, he immediately calls me an MF'er. First, second, he's on the screen, he calls me an MF'er. So this is what we're dealing with here. So I said, "I've got two hours worth of work to do by four o'clock. I have no overtime for my staff." And I called him by name, and I said, "I don't have time to hold you in contempt of court, so I'm gonna need you to apologize right now, please." And he did, and so I just let it go. If I held everybody in contempt of court that deserved it over there, you'd have another jail just for those guys. So that's where we're at on that. And the, the number that I shot out there, look, what that is, is an assumption that we're gonna have similar spending every quarter of the remaining three. That's where that number came from. Do I know that that's gonna happen? No, I absolutely do not. So, look, I'll play ball. If you guys wanna appropriate less than that, I'll come back another three months and tell you, oh, turned out, it got better in the summer, but I doubt that's gonna happen. It's an outrageous number.
Good job. I'm pleading ignorance here, okay? We have budgets hearing in August. You'll be before us for budget. Can this be included in your budget?
No, because these people have to be paid. The shrinks will quit working for me if they don't get paid.
Well, I understand that, but do we have a budget item for this?
Oh, yeah.
Estimating what's going to be needed for the...
We do, and that's what I said. I shot through that budget from the previous year.
Okay, that's what I, that was my question.
In the first quarter, I spent all you appropriated.
Really?
Yeah. That's why I'm here today, yeah.
Judge, I, I think you just said it, but I didn't catch it. What was the, your average psychiatric, psychiatric evaluation per prison?
Usually, I can get by with just two, and they range between $900 and $1,400 apiece, times two docs, you know?
Nine, fourteen, nine hundred to fourteen hundred?
Right, right.
Times two for each doctor?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so, like, over the last previous five years, how many of those evaluations are done, like, in a year's period of time versus where we're at now?
We're at about four times this year's run. We're running about 400% of our 45-year average, I would say. It's been an enormous spike, enormous spike.
What are you, I mean, given, given the crimes that they're charged with, you know, are we talking about just differences in, uh, drug habits and that kind of...
Well, methamphetamine is, surge in methamphetamine, which is an exacting move, but somewhat, you know, we transitioned from heroin epidemic into methamphetamine addiction. And seldom do you hear somebody speak fondly of heroin, but people act better on heroin than they do on methamphetamine.
Yeah, they do.
Their demeanor is better. Ask any of your street cops, sheriff of the city. They'd much rather deal with somebody that was on heroin than they would methamphetamine. They all think they're eight-foot-tall bulletproof when on methamphetamine. And, uh, these guys you see late at night standing around here, they're punching themselves and having these loud conversations with themselves, and that's methamphetamine.
So, so really, the increase is... So, so really the increase is the surge in meth?
It really is. And I think, and there's been a lot of literature on this, if you just Google courts and mental health problems, or courts and mental health problems, and even in Indiana, there's a whole bunch of stuff that pops up. You can read all kinds of articles on this. Coming out of COVID, probably you've all heard, drug use or not, that it was a real mental health problem. They talk a lot about it with the kids and the schools and the juvenile. Suicide rate's way up since COVID and, well, it affects adults as well. And then the methamphetamine just pushes whatever you already had going, it just supercharges. If you're inching, inching toward insanity and you start taking methamphetamine or increase your use of it, it just pushes you at light speed. That way you just go off the rails. So I would say mostly methamphetamine and then maybe just a little extra temporal problem caused by we now on the backside of, of people being extra stressed out during COVID, locked, locked in a room while they're high and deprivation and that kind of stuff, I guess. I mean, there's a lot of articles about it. Just Google it. I've read dozens of them. There's a bunch of literature out there on that. That whole COVID thing is not good. Let's not get started on all that politics. But it had a lot of side effects that weren't part of the mainline thinking while it was going on that were now suffering the consequences of.
This will, this will see you through to the budget?
Yeah, I hope.
Okay. And what you've not used could be included into the budget for the following year.
Yeah, if I don't use it, sure, roll it over. But the thing on this line item is, and some of you that have been on here for a while maybe remember, oftentimes we go through budget cycle and then you guys are trying to square the books, to send off for your final approval. Couple times you guys have come to me, or your predecessors have, and said, hey, this line item on mental health evaluations, can we trim some off of that? Because we're looking for little places to trim to try to balance the thing. And I'll say to you now the same thing I said to you then, was, yeah, you can budget it for zero if you want. I don't care what you budget it for because I have to order them and we have to pay them by law.
Yeah.
So if there's leftover, that's great. Let's roll it over into next year. And, you know, if you want to budget it a little bit at a time and hope things get better this year, I mean, we can do that. But it doesn't look like it to me. Second quarter didn't slow down any. Summertime's usually the worst. Third quarter's usually the worst.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion for the additional appropriation of $20,000.
Have a motion made in second for appropriation of $20,000 to Superior Court. All those favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Judge, what, what have we spent so far, do you know? Well, it was the five, I think, that was appropriated in the start. Wasn't that the original appropriation? I think we shot through that.
Five grand?
Yeah. But, but we already spent that and I've got docs typing their foot, waiting to be paid on claims that I haven't submitted because there isn't any budget to pay. Now, now there is. Just now.
It's possible this probably won't end, this won't do for the rest of the year.
Well, I'm hoping it is because the way I came up with that, as I said, I just took what we spent in the first quarter and I multiplied that by three and that's about where we're at. So if we have a soft quarter, maybe it'll get us home. Maybe half of that will get us home. And like you said, we can roll that into next year. I don't control how many crazy people are walking the streets. They just do it on their own? They don't ask permission?
Yeah, she started.
Ten?
Okay.
Yeah, we've got to pay the bill.
Yeah, we got to pay the bill. They'll quit working, we don't pay them in a timely fashion, they'll just quit working for me. Then I'm really, really in a jam.
Well, that's un-American.
Like I said, I'm not really defending the process. This needs, well, they did put some money into mental health in the last session.
I know.
So I'm waiting to see if this has a beneficial effect as it flows into the system, whether they keep people longer. And there's more of these real hard cases, lifelong hard cases. Mr. Wesley knows a few names that I'm not going to say, obviously, on the record, for people that, they've never been right. Since they were kids, they've never been right. This is not a spontaneous thing that started just because they began using drugs and if they get off the drugs, they'll be all right. They weren't right before the drugs. And even if they do get off the drugs, God bless them all if they do, they're probably still not going to be right. If they don't stay on their segments, they're not, they're going to continue to get rearrested all the time. That's just what it is. Some people, unfortunately, this world is just never going to be right for them. I mean, that's a hard unfortunate fact. Some people were born with a predilection toward this and just the way they do. That's right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have additional appropriation to County General Fund, $1,000. Veteran service officer account 10106, veteran service officer pay, $1,710.50. Have anyone here tonight that? Jane, you want to fill us in on this?
He's kind of got the explanation on there. He looks.
Increase due to additional funds needed to meet payroll for, see for the fourth quarter 2023. I currently work 28 hours a week. Currently, 2023 payroll budget does not allow me to claim actual hours worked, be worked for the CY 23. As funded, I would be short by the requested amount. So this is to make up for money. He's going to be short at the end of the budget year, right? $1,710?
Well, didn't we, didn't we budget for like 24 hours?
Yes.
A week?
He's working 28 hours a week.
I currently work. But we budgeted for 24?
Yeah.
Dale, do you know, how do the commissioners feel about him? I mean, do we, do we meet 28 hours a week or is it, is he just working 28 hours a week? Because, I mean, what's, is the need there for the 28 hours? And the commissioners thought?
From all I've observed and from all I've been told, 24 hours a week doesn't seem to be enough by his description to do what he, what his clientele has demanded. He, he certainly is putting in, you know, he put in more hours I think than he's getting paid for. But he, he had run into the same thing last year, if you recall. He'd been working all these hours and actually overextended it a budget on the salary that he was paid. So we warned him not to do that again. So by your, when you appropriated for 24 hours a week, it was 24 hours a week. I think if I recall, the, what was the amount, $1,700?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He, he did talk to commissioners about that here recently. I don't, I don't think it was in a public meeting, but I think it was after a meeting. He explained that with these additional $1,700 appropriation combined with what you'd already appropriated, that he thought that would work out to 28 hours a week for the entire year, which would, he feels more, more would suit his workload.
That's 45 minutes a day. That's 45 minutes a day he's working overtime.
Okay, well.
Well, not overtime.
Well, it is. I think the budget 24 is working 28.
Well, I guess my question was, do commissioners feel like that, that, you know, we need veteran services officer to work 28 hours a week?
Well, certainly. I, I think the veteran service officer is a, is a very, very necessary and important position.
I agree.
Agree with you too.
Yeah. We could, if you as the counsel, if you wanted to afford it, we could no doubt make that a full-time position. But I understand what, you know, what the, our constraints are there. But to add four, four hours a week for an additional $1,700, that doesn't sound like a whole lot to me.
Okay.
You, you know how these, if you're a veteran, you see this in a different light.
Yeah.
Oh, right.
I think he needs every hour he can give because I know he works a lot. Has a lot of needs.
Oh, if, I'm not, I'm not being critical of, of the man's job performance. I know.
I wouldn't say that.
Well, I had, I had a question for him. I left a message. I didn't expect him to call me back for a couple of days. He called me back on his day off. I mean, I, he didn't have to. I mean, I'm sure the man takes his job seriously and I have no qualms about that. My question isn't a personal one as to whether he's doing a good job or not. My question was, if, if the executive body of county government feels like, hey, look, we could use an extra four hours, then let's, you know, if you guys can spare the money, let's do it. That was my question.
Well, the commissioners did not initiate this request.
But would you have, would you have a problem with it? And you're the only commissioner here, otherwise I'd ask all three of them.
No, I do not have a problem.
Okay. Fair enough. I'll make a motion to pass the additional appropriation.
I'll second it.
Have a motion, move the second to appropriate the $1,710. You want to throw in the 50 cents too?
Yep.
Okay. 50 cents, okay. All those favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Veteran service officer request here. Addition to travel training line to cover estimated costs for annual veteran service officer conference in Indianapolis on, it was May of 2023 and June 1st of 2023. This is mandatory training in order to be certified as a, by Indiana Department of Veteran Affairs. So that was his cost for that. And he's asking for how much? $400?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Move the second to make a motion to pay the $400 for travel expenses. All those favors signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. There are no 144s anywhere. Okay. Any other business to bring before the council?
One quick thing. Here next month, I'm going to get a chance to go to today's D-Day, the 79th anniversary of D-Day. And I'm going to get a chance to go to Normandy next month.